Roll call, Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall.
Here.
Councilmember Warner.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
This time, please rise for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. Flag salute. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with open public meetings at Chapter 231 Public Law in 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster and Star Lodge on January 2nd, 2015, and posted on Bolton Board the same day. All notices are on file with the city clerk. Michael.
Thank you, Ms. President. City Council, previously there was this statement that public funds and beach revenue should be used for cleaning of the lakes. It was determined by the finance director, since the beach revenue is a dedicated fund, it cannot be used for such purpose. Council requested that this matter be visited with the finance director. His position is the same, that funds cannot be used for the lakes despite the lake employee deal. However, he indicated that there might be funds still available to address some concerns about the project. Public comments, there was also concern that private sidewalk work had been done by city employees at 821 Dunleavy Street, 301 First Avenue, 400 Ave., 3rd Avenue. It was confirmed that city employees placed two sections of sidewalk on the texture side of 301 First Avenue after a tree came down as a result of a storm. This would be the responsibility of the city. Two sections of sidewalk were replaced in front of 400 Ave. after a tree fell after a storm. This was also the responsibility of the city. However, since that replacement of the sidewalk, I Star as part of the infrastructure work replaced all sidewalks in Irving along the property.
Hey, Michael, can you talk into the mic a little bit? People are saying they can't hear.
Can you hear me? Want me to start over?
No.
No.
Thank you, Mayor. There is no indication that sidewalk replacement has been undertaken in front of 821 Dunleavy Street. At this point in time, there is no matters from the city manager to report.
Sir?
Go ahead.
Sorry.
No, your turn.
Special event applications, Lisha.
Please talk into the microphone.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Our first special event application is the Asbury Fresh Winter Pop-Up. They are requesting to use the Transportation Center on December 19th from the hours of 10 to 4:00. This would be an event where they would sell arts and crafts, no food, no alcohol. No questions? Next, we have a request from the New Jersey Pan-African Chamber of Commerce and Industry. They would like to use the council chambers on January 16th to do a workshop from the hours of 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And the following four applications, I'm just requesting that the date be approved as these have to be vetted by our special events committee. First one would be the National Brain Tumor Society Walk, which would be held on April Next would be Run-a-Palooza on April 16th. Third, March for Babies on April 24th. And fourth, A Sexual Assault Awareness Month 5K, which will be held on May 7th. And again, just requesting that the dates be approved until these can be vetted by our special events committee. Lastly, we have 17 wedding applications. Mayor, would you like me to go through each one individually?
No.
Okay. So, these are the requests, wedding application requests for 2016 so far. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we're moving on to items for presentation. The first one is for Michelle Alonso, our city planner.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and members of the public. I'm here before you again tonight, I had been before you last August, to talk about proposed changes to Chapter 30 of the city code, the zoning ordinance. Specifically, changes to fees and escrow, who can draw down from escrow, checklist procedures for different types of applications and fences. So, as I had discussed in August, I am proposing changes to the ordinance to increase the fees for what would be considered minor applications and the escrow deposits. Currently, application for variance without site plan, these tend to be the smaller applications, the fees range from anywhere to $150 to $450. For the ones that are $150, I'm proposing a rise to 300. Where it's 200, a rise to 300. $250, a rise to 500. For multifamily, which was $450 to $500, these are use variances. I'm trying to keep it consistent so that it's not broken down by type of unit. A use variance is a use variance, so they will all be $500. More importantly, I'm requesting an increase to the escrow fees to go from $200 to $800 escrow deposit, this is initial escrow deposit, for bulk variances, for any type of use and for a use variance to go from a range of $200 to $500 to $1,200 as initial escrow deposit. As I had stated in August, one of the reasons to increase this escrow deposit is that this ordinance has not been updated in decades, and $200 escrow deposit covers approximately an hour and a half to two hours of our professionals' time, that includes myself. The escrow deposits for major developments and fees, we have kept the same because we find that these deposits tend to be adequate. And they're based upon, per the MLUL, a calculation of number of units or square footage a project. I also added to the chart, the escrow deposit for plan amendment and the fee. This appears elsewhere in the ordinance, but I added it to this chart just because all the fees are together in this chart. The second part of this amendment is the list of professionals who are able to bill against an escrow deposit for an application to the planning board, the zoning board of adjustment, or to the technical review committee. Added to the list of professionals is a city engineer, the city attorney, and the title Assistant City Planner, which is the title held by Barbara Van Wagner. The other part of this ordinance to be amended to, so the two lists reconcile, is the list of professionals who are covered by escrow deposits for plan amendment. And added to is city engineer, city attorney, construction official, just because that's on the other list, we're trying to be consistent. And I added two additional professionals, engineers, and I had crossed out planning board secretary because the planning board secretary, per the MLUL, is not supposed to draw down from escrow. So that is part one. That's in the section for fees. Before I move on to my next part to cover, I'll field any questions on that section?
Go back to the last, the last one.
About plan amendment.
No, about somebody isn't covered by the MOU.
Planning board secretary. It's not covered by the MLUL.
This is something, Tony, I know there's been negotiations between the union, between trying to get a reduction in comp time, a reduction in everything. How does this affect all of that, which we've been working on in the past?
They should be paid. All right, those professionals are going to be paid by the planning board and the zoning board.
A flat fee?
Flat fee.
Like, X amount of dollars per year?
Per year.
And then, okay.
If it's $1,200.
And then that will solve this?
It can be, yes. It's also, yes, that would solve it. The planning board secretary holds, also has other titles. So, but the MLUL states that the planning board secretary, anyone holding that particular title cannot draw down from escrow. And with, but also to let you know, the general part of who can draw down from escrow, which has not been touched in decades, never had planning board secretary. It's only when my predecessor did a change for plan amendment, and that list was planning board secretary listed.
Okay. And again, I think this goes back before you, when you entered and everything.
Right.
And it has nothing to do with the person or the job title or anything. It was also, the city was, okay, so the person X, Y, or Z is going to go to this meeting and they're going to be paid a stipend for a year, plus comp time, or that's it?
No, not plus comp time.
With comp time.
Okay.
And the, with the planning board secretary and the zoning board secretary, all right, they work for those boards, so they would not be entitled to comp time through the city.
And they're aware of this and they have no problem with that?
Correct.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, good. Now, I just didn't want there to be, like, we've been trying to figure this out for, like, ages, and I didn't want to go backwards. Okay, so good. If everybody's on board with it, no problem.
Okay.
Are they aware of the fee? Are they aware of the fee that they will be receiving?
Yes.
Okay, no problem with that.
I believe not. Okay, should I move on to the next section?
Please.
Okay, so, actually, I went a little out of order just because I went to fences because fences is only four pages compared to what the next section will be. I come to you saying, with just a simple request, that, to prohibit chain link fence in front yards. So that's what this essentially does. I did do a little bit more cleanup in this ordinance, just a little bit cleaning, like, put a provision for drainage for retaining walls, and also prohibiting solid fencing for street-facing fences. I also, we had a differentiation that higher density districts could have a higher fence. I made it the same, no matter what density district you're in, because that also didn't make plant, planning sense, that a size of fence should not be determined by the density of your, your home. And I also struck that, at the discretion of the zoning officer, the zoning officer could permit a fence up to eight feet in a commercial or industrial zone. I struck that because that's subjective. And I, again, I believe that it's, that fences in those areas can comply with the rest of the ordinance, no problem. And that's also with discussion, with discussion with the zoning officer.
And just so the public's clear, if you currently have a fence like that, your grandfather didn't, but from here on out, you can now put that up?
Correct. If you currently have a chain link fence and you are not in the, and it was put up legally, or it's, or even before we had records, you can keep that chain link fence until you remove it or it falls down. And again, with, this is a change, again, with the modernization of the code, there are very, now very attractive, open picket fences made of composite material that you can purchase at Home Depot, that should be of a comparable price as chain link. And again, this is really, it's just for front yard, for what is visible from the street.
Okay, so the part you said you struck was, big security fences?
Yes.
Which I have no problem with, but like, down at the 1101 Ocean, it's not a security fence, but it's a construction fence.
Correct. And construction fences are covered in another part of the ordinance.
Okay, so, they can go up quick without?
Correct.
Fantastic.
That's a temporary fence.
Mm-hmm. Okay, thanks.
Before I move on to the next section, are there any other questions on that topic? Okay, so then, the last section is what we have for development applications called checklist, development checklist. And we currently have five different checklists for the five different types of planning board and zoning board applications you can have. One for major site plan, which is the major projects. Minor site plan, that are tend to be for smaller commercial uses. Minor subdivision, which is for subdivision of four less lots. Major subdivision, which is for five or more lots or creation of a street. And variance-only application, these are for, these are applications where they, they tend to be one-family homes where they don't meet the definition of site plan. Most of the clean, what I, the changes I made to these applications are cleanup. These have not been modified in a while. And what I had done, especially for major site plan, is I clarified some of the language for some of the checklist items. And I added a few items that should be here, that's normally requested, such as a demolition plan, if there's demolition, maps showing the thousand-foot radius of the property and the surrounding properties, clarifications, like labeling our zoning comparison table that that's what it is, the table itself is in the ordinance, but sits there without a label. And I did the same with the minor, minor site plan application, and I did minor changes to subdivisions. My largest changes were with the variance-only application, because those applications had almost, had no checklist. So, for if you had a variance-only application, the language stated basically any material that the municipality and the board needs for your application. Again, that was subjective, so I put some standards in there, and I separated into two types of, of variance-only applications, those that involved a, a building, and those that involved things that don't involve a building, like a deck or a swimming pool. So now, there's two standards for that type of application. The other reason to bring these tonight is, it has, these need to be codified properly. I believe that they are not, they're referred to in the zoning ordinance as an attachment, and the attachment does not appear in the code. So tonight, or, this is an ordinance that requires two readings, if you so wish to adopt this ordinance change, this will correct that. Any questions on this topic?
Any questions?
No.
Okay. So thank you for your time and attention tonight.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is going to be made by the Asbury Park Police Department. We have Joel Fiore here.
Good evening. The first, the only, actually, the only presentation I have tonight is on a request for 15-minute parking space to be implemented in front of 803 Second Avenue, Asbury Park Road 3. The space will begin 60 feet west of the northwest corner of Second Avenue and Main Street and extend 20 feet west from there.
It was a request, and the parking committee said absolutely, so.
Yeah, and it's a good example of, like, there's more businesses moving into that area, so this is where free parking doesn't work, because she has employees and people parking in front of her business, and her customers have nowhere to park. So they have nowhere to park to go in and get coffee, because it's just free parking all they own. So she asked for a 15-minute spot until we put up meters, and she said, if you put up meters, put them up in front of my place, because it'll help with the business turnover and getting people in and out. So, and Main Street's down the road, so.
And if you don't mind, I just have one quick thing to add in reference to the Memorial Drive paving project. Due to manholes that they did not know were under the current paving from previous county jobs, it has set them back two days. They're going to be doing some additional patchwork to repair the manholes that are there, and determining whether they need to be vacated or raised to meet the new road surface. So it's now extended that job into Monday of next week. They're going to continue working tomorrow and Wednesday, doing the repairs, and then the paving Monday morning.
Doing, working Thursday or Friday?
No.
Okay.
Not this week.
Okay, no, because we've had some contractors, be it the deal like dredging, ask if they could work on the holidays, and we told them no.
No, they didn't even offer that opportunity.
No, and, no, no, I appreciate the update, because a lot of people woke up this morning, and all of a sudden, Asbury Avenue was closed, Memorial Drive was closed, so it's going to be posted on NICSOL quickly, so, and again, saves me from later. Anybody that doesn't have NICSOL, sign up for it, please, as soon as possible. But yeah, we woke up this morning, and there was detours all over the place. Now, Asbury Avenue, they're going to do Neptune and Titten Falls, and they're going to stop at Ridge and pick up Ridge in the spring.
Correct.
From the Asbury Park border to Main Street, so they should be out of Asbury Avenue by Wednesday, Thursday.
Correct.
Okay. So there's going to be no milling and no paving on Asbury Avenue, so that will be open for the holiday season. So that, that's very good. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is going to be presented by Mr. Ross regarding tax abatement for 700 Cookman Avenue.
Thank you. Just to set the record straight, I am not James Ross, that's Squire. That's my brother, he couldn't bank it here today. William Ross. We are in the process of trying to renovate 700 Cookman Avenue. We are discovering that there's going to be a lot more involved than we initially thought there would be. We think it's a very important corner on Cookman Avenue. It's a building that's been left to a state of disrepair for quite some time. My brother and I felt, all along, that we, as well as anyone else, but we had a responsibility, if we were capable, of buying this building, fixing it up, and turning it back into a vibrant storefront, and residences up above. We're asking for a partial tax abatement, because we are not allowed to ask for a tax abatement for the renovations of the apartments above the first floor. I'll get to that in a minute. So we're asking for a partial tax abatement for the portion that is the retail, and the portion that the retail will be using in the basement. So it's approximately 35 to 40 percent of the entire renovation. And although we're not sure of the exact amount, the number of dollars that it's going to cost to do it, we are asking for an abatement for that portion of the building. But I would like to get, at least for a minute, into why we're not asking for a full tax abatement. The rules for tax abatements in Asbury Park state that if I was building condominiums upstairs and selling them to rich people from New York, their taxes would be abated. But because we are building rental units that would be available to people living in Asbury Park, or who want to live in Asbury Park, we're not allowed to ask for an abatement for that portion of the building. And although we're not going to benefit from any change in the rules, I think the city council should look into changing this.
Only thing, not to cut you off, but the only thing I would say about that, and Eric can correct me, it's a state, it's a state.
Is that right?
Comes from the state.
Legislation.
Legislation, right. We, every five years, we can say, we'll go for it or we don't go for it, and then it's by ordinance that residential is accepted on application, and they leave it at the discretion of the council to do commercials. So it's, we can, the only thing we can say is we'll get rid of it altogether, which many people argue. We can't, we can't change.
I've got to say, under the circumstances, with the additional expenses that we find we're running into, we really do need the help of this abatement. Later on, when we refinance the building, a smaller tax bill will allow us to recoup at least a small portion of the additional expenses that looks, we're going to, looks like we're going to run into.
Two quick questions. So, the description in your application of, there's going to be a certain cost savings to you if, if you're granted the abatement, so.
For the first five years, yeah.
Yeah. So, do you know approximately what that cost is going to be?
I believe that it's going to cost us about a quarter million, about $250,000, to do that portion of the building. So it'd be abated based on the improvement cost, which is about $250,000. I can't put an exact number on it now, because as we've gone through the building, we've unfortunately discovered a number of problems that we didn't know were going to be there.
Okay, so, I guess my first question is, what are the taxes on that building?
I'm not sure, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, then I'll keep my comments pretty general. If you're asking for an abatement, which I publicly say this all the time, or the city to eat a certain amount, we request some sort of, either the construction that you're going to use be local, that you do some sort of job fairs, or whoever you're, who are you renting, are you renting this space, or are you going?
We have no idea who we're renting to.
Okay, so you, okay. Okay.
But the idea on that is, is potentially to put something in the lease where the people who would be renting would be able to, the certain portion of the people that they hire.
Well, that's fine. You know, I actually had thought about this before tonight's meeting. If it ends up that it's a couple of people who bake and sell wonderful fruit pies, and they need nobody to help them, no one to help them bake or sell, what do we do?
If it ends up as a 10,000-square-feet restaurant, what do we do?
Well, no, I agree with you.
Right.
I agree completely.
Since you brought up the subject, and you're absolutely right, we, if it was condos, and you condo-ed out the building, you'd be qualified for the entire project. So it's going to be rentals. Are they affordable rentals? What's your, you know, you brought the subject up, so I'm going.
I don't have to, I have to discuss this. I believe that they would be affordable to, what we have planned are three two-bedroom, two-bath apartments and one one-bedroom, one-bath apartment. I believe that the two-bedroom, two-bath apartments will be within line with two civil servants renting them, two people from the waitstaff at Taka renting them.
Are you looking for a price range? I don't know what the waitstaff at Taka makes.
I don't either, but I'm assuming, I'm assuming that they can each afford $1,000 a month.
So they're going to be $2,000?
The two bedrooms, not the one bedroom. Would be around $2,000 a month, yeah. So it's not, it depends on your definition of affordable.
The first question, I think we should always ask, if we said no, are you going to walk away, or are you going to keep on building? And nobody tells us the truth, so say whatever.
I'm going to tell you the truth.
Okay.
My brother and I feel that we have a very strong responsibility to Asbury Park, and there's no chance we would walk away. If you require that I put, that I require every tenant to hire people from Asbury Park, I can't guarantee that, because I don't, don't know who my tenant's going to bid.
I don't blame you one bit.
And we'd also be, listen, we're flexible, we're working on that, so in terms of construction, we would ask that you, you try to hire local construction. In terms of, like, windows, we have a great window place in Asbury, or tile, or whatever. You know, it isn't, through the last five-year abatement, and the conversation through that, was that it is, it is difficult for me to require whoever's going to lease this to do this. So we'd ask for job fairs, and that they make some sort of commitment to hiring local. But beyond that, you could also use local contractors, you can use local plumbers, you can use local businesses when you're doing some of these renovations.
We, we've begun to look at contractors and people to work on this. It's a pretty big job. And while I can request that the eventual general contractor I hire hold job fairs and try to hire within the community, I really can't guarantee that, I'm sorry.
Absolutely, nobody can guarantee.
So yes, the answer is, we're going to see this through one way or the other. How badly we get hurt on the back end, to some degree, depends on your decision.
But then, going back to some of Amy's questions, as far as taxes, what'd you ask?
What are the current taxes?
I know the numbers, but if, I don't, I actually spoke to Eric, I have, I have all your numbers.
Look, we're not asking for the current taxes to be abated. I believe the abatement is based on the dollar amount of the improvements. be abated, I believe the abatement is based on the dollar amount of the improvements. And we're just asking that the taxes on that improvement dollar amount be abated for the five years.
Okay.
And only that portion related to the retail.
And you don't know what you're going to put in that space yet?
I have no idea, we, we got very lucky on Cookman Avenue, we have four wonderful tenants on Cookman Avenue right now, I love every one of them. We have rules. We want our tenants to be experienced and successful. We don't want them to come in and leave after three months, we've had that before. And I really don't know who we're going to get, I doubt we're going to get a big loud bar, it's not that big a space. So probably quiet business, be my guess.
So not a restaurant?
I don't know, the space is big enough for a restaurant, frankly, at the cost of liquor licenses right now, I would doubt that they would get one.
Okay.
But that would be fine with me because the liquor store on the next block is my tenant and would be more business for him. So that would be good.
Okay, I was just, I'm curious, what else do you own?
Oh, we have Lush and Fetish and Mogo and Belmonte's on Cookman Avenue, those four. So if there's no liquor license in, it's a restaurant, they'll all have to go to Lush to pick up their wine for dinner.
Or build a tunnel.
Right.
And just tell Trenton you built a tunnel and Trenton says yes, so, okay, well, I have no other questions.
No, I have no other questions, the only thing I would say is like, I would, I would prefer to have a little bit more information, like narrowing down exactly what you're going to put in that space and then some commitment in writing on what you're going to do in terms of workforce.
We, we built out the other four stores on Cookman Avenue with absolutely no idea who we're going to have as tenants.
So if we give you an abatement and you open up a stripped club, that's obviously not going to reflect well on us giving you an abatement for five years, right?
I promise not to open a stripped club.
You just lost my vote.
By the way, just to let you know, the fourth apartment, the one-bedroom, one-bath, I'm reserving for myself, I'm not going to have a loud business downstairs.
Right, but it's useful to know for us, even if, so if we don't know, it's useful to have an idea of what you'd be willing to require, if possi, if it's a two-person, two-person owner operated, then reasonable people, which we are, would say, okay. But if you've got 10 employees at a place, could there be two or three locally? That's what I think we'd be looking for, for a commitment, because here's the situation with tax abatements, and correct me if I'm wrong, in 2009, it was like a 5-0 vote to do it for five more years, in 2008. Then the last council, 2013 or 14, it was 2-3 to vote for it, to continue the tax abatements. And there are many communities that get rid of these five-year tax abatements, it's just something that, as a community, you can do if you would like to do it, you don't, you don't have to do it by any stretch of the imagination, it's not, no one's entitled to do it. So it's just a way for us to try to, there's the idea of the development that's happening downtown, push it out to all parts of the community. So when we're talking with someone who's going to be opening up new places and we're going to do this, which is going to be a benefit, we just want some insurance, assurance that you're going to make an effort to, if the opportunity arises either during construction or during the retail portion, that we would have some assurance that it would be some effort to hire locally.
I can guarantee you that if I hire a general contractor for the job or if I'm the general contractor, we will make efforts to hire people from the community. I really can't guarantee you on, on the end, what my tenant's going to be, who they're going to be, or what they're going to be willing to agree to. And frankly, at the cost of this project, if I have the perfect tenant, I'm not going to lose them because of this. The abatement is not worth that much money to us and I'm not going to lose them over that.
Unless you have anything else you want to say to us, but no, I, I got to honestly say thank you for being 100% honest.
We always are.
Well, that, that means a lot.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
And a good Thanksgiving.
Thank you, same to you and your family.
All right, the next item is review of the agenda items for November 24th at regular meeting.
What are we on, I'm sorry?
Review of agenda items for tomorrow.
Okay, what I think we should do, and just bear with me a second, like, we usually start and we hopscotch all around, so maybe it'd be better off if we start at the top and just go through and be easier for the audience to follow also?
Well, they don't, wow, I was going to say, they don't, they don't have their agenda for tomorrow.
Oh, they don't?
No, well, it's online, but we don't, I don't print it out until tomorrow.
Okay, it's online, okay, so, however.
However you want to do it.
Should we go from the top? Whatever, I better bust. Go ahead, Joe.
The only one I had a question, well, yeah, I had a question on the 1033 program, or we, I didn't, is there any?
That's 2015-367.
367, the first resolution, what was in front of us, then we talked about doing a policy before we tabled it until we got a policy. Now, just wondering, do we have a policy to review in conjunction with that?
Yes, there's a, yes, there's a policy, I'll send it out tomorrow to make sure, 1033 program, that everyone has it beforehand, it's pretty standard, it says, you know, what, basically what the resolution says. Mr. Slerno has included it as part of the operating procedures in the police department and the mayor and I had a discussion today about the resolution where we might be tweaking some of the language about the 30-day review. And this is in response to, there's some items that the city might want to acquire, for example, a cable for batteries in a five-ton vehicle that really don't need city review because it's such, such a standard item.
Right.
That we want to try to change the language a little bit to allow for just the city to acquire those.
Right, and my only concern was, and I don't know if it makes sense on the, does it make them, I think the mayor raised this the first time, does it make sense on the backend to do after you buy a review or does it?
No, I think that's what Michael's going to tweak and I think Tony submitted a plan that I read online and when we get that tomorrow, that's going to, where it's going to, it's like, a lot of these things come online, like tomorrow could be pop up a bulldozer and there's 30 towns going to jump on it and we cannot wait for like to have a council meeting.
Right, right, right.
But it's going to be like, the orders will read, like, if the police are interested, they can get in touch with the city manager, the city manager can pull us if we say, yes, we want the bulldozer, no, we don't want a half-track or a tank.
Okay.
So we don't go to Ohio and get it, then 30 days later, send it back.
Right.
So it'll give us flexibility that way, but a lot of these items, you have to jump on right away because there's so many other towns, it's so competitive. So we want to make it flexible, but we also want to make sure, no, we don't want to get something we didn't want and then 30 days later, so that paragraph, I think, is going to come out and then we're going to add in the flexibility that I think Tony helped write and everything, so that'll be fine tuned for tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, as long as there's some, and again, I have no concerns how things are set up now, but just as things move down in the future, I don't want it to, I want there to be like oversight and some communication between the council, city manager and police and everything.
I just have a question, are we going to take a position with, you mean, the adoption of the, okay, my question is, we're getting these adoptions of the assessment demonstration program and the changes when people wanted to change the tax structure and a number of boroughs are going on record saying we support changing the way the taxes are being assessed. What are we going to do, are we going to be in support of that or?
Well, we've gotten resolutions from other towns asking to support it and we've got resolutions asking us not to support it. So I think until we have a discussion with the city manager and Eric, it would be shooting in the dark. I think it's a discussion we should have, but it seems to be playing out every day more and more in the papers, so I, I mean, it was a political issue, it was an election issue, and now it's still an issue and we're going to have to look at it. At one point, it definitely helped Asbury Park because it gave us the opportunity to put a lot more ratables online because we had recent sales on the beachfront, be it the Hovnanian property, we had recent sales in Long Branch where if we had to wait 10 years, we couldn't have adjusted some of either Madison Marquette's or Istar's properties up, so we probably gained another $20 million in ratables because of this process. So there's good and bad to it and again, it's being played out in the papers, I, I think we should get a full presentation from both Mike and Eric and go from there before we make any recommendations. And again, like, 50% of the towns are saying we're for it, 50% are saying we're against it. So it is a political hot potato, but until, I have more facts, but one day we're going to have to address it. I think we have to, didn't we get something, we have to formulate a plan one way or another or, we got something recently?
I, I don't think there's been something that says we have to do something, it's just that a lot of the municipalities, as the mayor said, are going in either for or against. The state is taking a look at the program and there was a New Jersey Spotlight article this morning that, that showed that the state is actually stepping in, in an unprecedented manner over the last 40 years, where they're ordering towns to do a revow. Elizabeth, Danellin, and somewhere else.
Jersey City.
Jersey City.
Jersey City, 37 years, hasn't had a tax revow.
So this is not going to go away anytime soon and speaking with the tax assessor, the city's in very good shape right now. When you have ratios in the 20s, 30%, it's horrible because it's unfair taxation across the board. So right now, the city is, I think, at 91, 92%. At the end of this year, it should be closer to 96, 97%, which is market rate and that's what you want. So the city's in good shape, the countywide program, as the mayor said, it's going to be political in some aspects, I don't know which way it's going to go, but the city's in very good shape with this assessment system.
Yeah, two quick ones. 410, State and New Jersey Department of DEP with the Green Acres, and Joe, I could probably bump that.
Yeah.
Probably.
So...
It was just a vague resolution.
Right, so this, I'm glad you raised that because there was one issue on there. So this essentially starts the clock, the legislature authorized the funds for the Green Acres money, was, before that was just the Green Acres group saying that they're, they're going to allocate the funds. The legislature has to authorize it, which they did, which starts the clock, which means we have an hour to use that 1.1 million.
A year, not an hour.
A year to use the 1.1 million. So this resolution just, you know, says we're, we're going forward with the negotiation, which we are. We sent our two appraisals to Brian Tripp at Istar and he got back to us and said they're going out for their own appraisal. So our appraisers gave us like two weeks to four weeks that they could turn it around, so I'm assuming before the new year, we'll have an appraisal from Brian and Istar and then we can go into the new year with, with a negotiation because the clock has started. It's, you know, earlier this month, they appropriated the funds, so you have a year, you know, we have until the end of next October essentially to get it done.
And if we don't use it, we lose it.
If you don't use it, you lose it, yeah. And it's a 1.1 million that is on the table for Asbury Park and if it doesn't go to Asbury Park, it's not going back in anybody's pocket, it's going to some other town to save open space in their town. So it's really important for us to get the negotiations going and definitely hoping that, that the appraisal from Istar comes in soon. The only question I had on this is number two, under now, therefore be resolved, the match requirement for us, because we're an urban district, is 25% of the 1.1. So I don't think that number, I think we can put that number at, you know, whatever it is, 200?
65.
60.
60.
Yeah, whatever, yeah, whatever it is, I don't think it has to be 1.1 million there. I guess just double check that. Because I know our match is 25% of what they allocate and if they're doing 1.1.
Okay.
I think that's it on that one.
And then, Michael, I didn't understand, actually the next one, the resolution regarding the hazardous discharge site remediation fund, it was like another, a little bit vague resolution.
This resolution has been brought forth by the Director of Planning, Ms. Alonso, to remediate a potentially underutilized facility, it's basically just a cleanup grant that the state offers.
Okay.
For what could be a, in a public improvement.
This is the retro for the parcel that's the park, we cleaned it up.
Is this the VRS one or no?
No, well, VRS put the application for us retroactively, we paid out pocket to clean up some lots where spring, where the park is going to go. This is the, we were supposed to do a resolution authorizing the application, we smoothed the application anyway and we have to pay a $500 fee, but we will get $33,000 back.
Okay, no, because I think I remember VRS sending us something they were getting, that we're getting the 33,000.
Right, this is the, the authorizing resolution, just doing it in reverse order.
Okay.
So the cleanup, we've been done, we just now get the grant.
It's a reimbursement at this point.
And it was, it, yes, okay, no, that's how I understand it to be.
And we, we have to get this in before, I think, December 6th, more or less.
Okay.
Don't go in place, don't go in place. Do you have anything else? No, no, this could be yours too, 2015-52, Land Development Regulations.
It's what I presented on tonight, is this under ordinance?
Okay, that's this.
It's the first reading.
And this first reading tomorrow.
Okay, that's it, okay.
Thanks, Michelle. You're welcome.
Anybody else want anything on the agenda?
So, and Michelle, I guess this is sorry, so if we're getting $33,000 back, where does that go? General fund?
Yes, it goes into the general fund.
Okay.
I believe, I could be wrong.
I could be wrong, I think the, the funds for cleanup, KNAV engineering, yes, the KNAV engineering, the funds for cleanup.
Okay, thanks. That's all I got.
That's all I have as far as agenda.
Matters by City Council?
Anybody else?
Oh, I had someone.
I have, yeah. Okay, first of all, if I don't see any one of you tomorrow, I just want to wish you a happy Thanksgiving. Some people might come tomorrow, some people might not, but if I don't see you, just have a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Last week, City of Asbury Park sent down quite a few of its workers here to Atlantic City for municipality gathering and it was very interesting. But I learned more from being around other council people and city managers and police chiefs than I did in when I was in class. One of the things that really lit me up was, we had, I, I talked about wearing badges about maybe three months ago and I think Tony looked into it and he started it, but somehow or another, it didn't last long. And I would like to talk about that a little bit more, like to ask the city manager to look into that. Some kind of ID, some kind of badge, ID that people need to know who people are when they enter City Hall. And that was one of the main things that I talked to people about and I talked a little bit about security, we talked a little bit about security, which I had a little meeting with Mike today and Tony and the mayor and I talked a little bit about it last week and I feel that is highly important, that we really are thinking more about the security of the building, the security of the town. But I would like for you to really look into the workers and employees of Asbury Park to start wearing badges, some sort of IDs. Thank you. Just so you know, I met with the city manager this afternoon and I brought up the subject and told him that you and I were on the same page as far as like second floor, just people wandering around with offices wide open, police department wide open and so that is...
Mayor, I have to interrupt you that you really shouldn't be talking about our security leaks.
Yeah, I was going to.
Publicly. Publicly.
Okay.
There's some issues that will, there'll be some issues that will be addressed.
You'd have to be blind not to see them.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Jesse, I agree with you. We'll talk later. Nope, don't have to.
No, I'll have to say. Thank you. Next.
God bless you, Mark.
Any other matters by City Council?
Amy?
No.
Okay, I have two quick ones. In the spring of every year, we have the Monmouth County 200 Club. They honor Police and Fire Department in Monmouth County that does a great job. Past Saturday night, the State PBA, 119th Annual Vower Awards Banquet. Atlantic City Caesars, it is a very, very nice function. I was honored to be invited. I attended. And if you go through the program, they have all types of awards, and the first award is the Gold Medal of Vower Award. And two of Asbury Park's finest. There was only 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 total awards for Gold Medal of Vower given out, and two were Asbury Park Police Officers. Police Officer Johnny Washington and Police Officer Carl Christie. Both as, obviously Asbury Park PBA six. They should be very, very proud. They are, and I'm very, very proud. And congratulations. Second thing, it's tax season, it's sewer season, it's revow season, and nobody's happy. And I don't blame them. I mean, my revow went up, my taxes went up, and, but all I would ask the public to do is, you got a problem, come here and yell at us. When you go in to pay your tax bills, the ladies and gentlemen behind that bulletproof glass, which is times needed, should not get beat up. All they are doing is their job. They're doing the job as per state statute. They cannot change the laws. There was a complaint yesterday, a valid complaint. Somebody got fined $65 for being late. $15 of the fine was for being late. The minimum by state law is $15. That's what Asbury Park fines. The maximum is $150. If we were like, and we're being called greedy, cut throats, no good SOBs, whatever, the fine would be $150. It's the minimum. It's $15. The other $50 was for two mailings. Now, if they got in today or tomorrow and paid it, one mailing would be revoked, and then we'd get a $25 credit. So please, if you have questions, call the department heads. Amy's posted all their phone numbers on the website. They're on Nextdoor. Nextdoor took the city officials off. They cannot respond. I try to respond, but I'm doing them injustice. But please, when you go in to pay your taxes, do not yell and beat up these people. All they're doing is their job. And they get beat up every November, December unmercifully, and it's just totally wrong. And as far as, like Jesse said, I hope to see everybody again tomorrow night, but if not, everybody enjoy Thanksgiving and think what it's really about. Because sometimes we forget. Thank you.
Matters by City Manager?
I have none.
Matters by City Attorney?
Don't mention it.
Have a motion, open a meeting to the public?
Move it.
Move it close.
Yeah. Couldn't even get a word out. The public is expected to conduct themselves in a proper manner. Any derogatory, abusive, or threatening statements will not be permitted. The Chair will immediately rule such conduct out of order, and appropriate warning. May terminate any further comments from the speaker. You all have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and your address for the record. Pam, you ready?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pam Lamerton, 6th Avenue. I stand here on behalf of the Asbury Park Complete Streets Coalition. We currently have approximately 25 members, but we're looking to increase our size. Membership is open to anyone who wishes to help make our streets safe and equitable for all who use them. We've identified several initiatives that we are preparing to present to you, the council. We will be requesting time on some of your future agendas to make these presentations for these initiatives. Unfortunately for us and our Asbury Park pedestrians, one of our initiatives must be presented now, tonight, without 8 and 1/2 by 11 glossies or state crash data on Asbury Avenue regarding pedestrian incidents. I'm speaking, of course, about the paving on Asbury Avenue and the need to have consistent, easily seen, easily recognized, state-approved crosswalks. Many residents cross Asbury Avenue for its full length, to and from public schools, to and from the Catholic school, which is on, backs onto Asbury Avenue, to and from the Boys and Girls Club, which is just one block off of Asbury Avenue, to and from businesses, restaurants, delis, and laundromats, all of which are within the neighborhood commercial zone, which is Asbury Avenue. The county is in the process of repaving the street ahead of schedule. Who could believe that? Or the coalition would have been more prepared to make a presentation to you. When it is repaved, it will have to be restriped. The Safe Streets Coalition asks that you tonight, tomorrow night, vote to make all crosswalks in Asbury Park a priority, and specifically instruct whoever the city liaison is with the county road crew to make the crosswalks on Asbury Avenue one more frequent. Honestly, I think I only see one crosswalk on Asbury Avenue, and that's at Prospect. I interject here, the news about the fact that they're only doing half of Asbury Park Avenue and the other half in the spring changes what I'm about to say a little bit. But we're also requesting the piano key style of crosswalk. It is more easily recognizable as a warning that pedestrians are around. There are three state standards for crosswalks, and Michelle Alonso is, I have spoken to her about this, and she's more than happy to consult with you on it. But the state doesn't necess, they will approve alternate crosswalks, but they like the kind that we have, which the Safe Streets does not like. The kind that we have is just two lines, and it makes it look like it's a corral for pedestrians. I have four seconds left. Please, could you just make a policy tonight and say that crosswalks are a priority, and get the county on board with what you would like to see, which hopefully is piano keys? Thank you.
Yes, yes, certainly. And that job has been put off to the spring. So tonight, you didn't have to rush it through. Part of the reason the job is put off to the spring is because the county, when they pave a road, they do not replace curbs. And we cannot make them replace the curbs. We're ticked off. But they have to replace the storm drains. And there's some raggedy storm drain on their road that they were not going to replace. And we said, no, state law says you have to replace them. So anything, we're going to have, the original job was for the spring. Then they moved it up to December 1, then all of a sudden, last week, big signs went up, starting October, November 23. So Kevin was in touch with them, Tony was in touch with them, the chief, and we're like, what's going on? And they were supposed to come down and have, Kevin went to a pre-construction meeting, again, it was December 1. Everything was moved up. Everything was stopped today in Asbury Park, again, mainly because of there are raggedy storm drains that do not meet water quality standards. And crosswalks will be provided.
Well, did I hear tonight that Memorial's going to be paved?
Memorial is, yes.
Just, this all applies to Memorial, too.
Oh, well, yes. Whatever they have to do by law, we will enforce. We cannot, if they have an engineering department that says, we don't like the keyboards, they're under, some of the money they're getting is from the feds. And the feds look at every penny and say, no, we're not going to change an order because you want this. They may come back to us, say, you want that, you pick up the cost.
But if you have a policy, maybe they will respect that. But right now, there is none.
Pam, we will definitely meet with them. If you want to be there, I'll let you know. It'll be a public meeting, like we've had in here, we've had the public here.
Fantastic.
You'll be invited. And you can bag away at them also.
The storm drains that they're going to put in, we do have in our own city code restrictions on storm drains, that they have to be bicycle tire safe. You know, they have to be, that's in our code, though. So hopefully, they'll respect it.
They want to take the old ones that were built in 1920 with just like cement, which has nothing, where it doesn't.
With a big hole.
To lake, and put a rebar across it. And we said, no, you got to, they did Memorial Drive the right way. And we took pictures, and Kevin sent them up to the county, saying, see how you did Memorial Drive? That's what we want on Asbury Avenue. That's the main reason Asbury Avenue's not being paved now, because we pitched a bitch, and we said, no, it's your street, you're going to repave it. We can't fight you on the curbs. That's your policy. But state policy is, if you redo a street, you have to upgrade the storm drain. So right now, they, we're not their best friends because we're forcing them to do the right thing. And with the crosswalks, totally agree with you. Wherever they should be, they will be.
Okay, great. Look forward to those meetings. Thank you.
Same thing happened with the wall crosswalks on 4th. Once we started putting the traffic down, those two lines get washed out from traffic after like two months, after the painting. So just so everybody's aware, when we're in the meetings, to try to ask for those piano key ones, because they're easier to see, they last longer, they're safer for pedestrians. So it's just a general request. If they'll do them, I mean, we can only ask, we can't even do it, but we can at least ask.
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
Pam, is this committee, is it this a different name for the bike committee?
Yes.
These are the same people?
Yes.
And when we have that meeting, Pam, Tony, Kevin, remember to, if it's.
So I'm sure, I'm sure some of us would love to come.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Tracy Rogers, 900 Monroe Avenue. I addressed with you guys about two weeks or three weeks ago about the leaves. On my block, there's about six patches of leaves that are blocking people's parking spots. And this morning, with the construction going on, and street sweeping, there were no spots for most people to park because for three weeks, we've had leaves. And I know your manual says that you pick up leaves when someone calls, but they're pushing them out into the street, and you have piles of leaves. And now, when you're doing a seat sweeping, which happened last week, dirt got thrown into the leaves. So now it's becoming a bigger mess. So I don't know.
Are you saying the same pile of leaves was out for three weeks?
Yes. One side.
922 Monroe.
Yeah. On the other side, my neighbor, and I saw her two weeks ago, put out her leaves. Nothing got picked up. Leaves got put out last week. On my neighbor on the left, didn't get picked up. Leaves are, right now, on the other side, that just got done the other day. So I don't think anybody knows when they get picked up. Some people actually clean them up and put them in the street. But, and then I could look up three blocks up, and I could see all the piles of leaves. So I don't know.
So I've seen the exact opposite of you, because I've seen them out doing the leaves.
Yeah, I can show, but I can show you on my camera.
No, 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 I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying, and maybe it's just a coordination, because I see them doing the leaves every morning.
Yeah, that's what I see. I know on the other side, on 1st Avenue, 2nd Avenue.
Third and 4th.
They're done. They were in front of library, but over on Seawell and Monroe, and do we not get time to come over and pick up over here? So that was a question. Also, I don't know if anyone saw, there's a, and I talked about the temporary, the summer rental application. This is Belmar's. Belmar charges $175 for fire inspection and license, plus a $100 tourism. This is the paperwork right here.
No, we have summer rentals in Asbury Park. You know that, right?
Yeah. But right now, I'm looking for a full year because we have landlords that aren't cleaning up their leaves and doing other things. But this is a proactive approach that this ordinance combined, that needs to be addressed statewide, that we need to know the summer rentals, what are they doing? And also.
Have you read Asbury Summer Rental Ordinance?
I couldn't pull it up.
Okay.
But also.
Send me your email. I'll send it to you, because I think it's yearly rental, because we've had, I think, I believe, and I was on the summer rental committee, we use Belmar's ordinance as a boilerplate for doing it. Fred and I worked on it two years ago. But I'll double check it. I certainly can email it to you.
Okay. And it's $175. And also, they're charging $100 tourism fee. Do you guys know about that?
I don't believe we charge a tourism fee.
I don't know if we need to look into how that fee is established, or maybe helping to promote their city, and what.
Sure.
And do us a favor, give us a copy of that. Cindy, can you pull those up one line?
It's Belmar, you said, right?
Yeah, I can give it to her. The leave situation.
The leave situation, okay. To the best of my knowledge, I believe I'm going to be 100% correct, because it hasn't changed. We cannot tell you, if you call up tomorrow and say, if you call DPW tomorrow and say, when is the leaf truck going to be on my street? They're going to say, we can't tell you exactly what day, but each zone will be hit at least once a week. So why 922 Monroe hasn't been hit in three weeks is an anomaly that we'll look into tomorrow, make sure it is hit as soon as possible. But, you know, it's one thing that I always took pleasure in. When Terry Reedy was the city manager, and I worked for DPW, he said, John, I've worked in three other towns, and very towns with a lot more trees here. And he said, this is the only town, we never got any complaints about leaves, which we do such a great job. And I think this year, they're doing just as good a job, and with probably less equipment than I had. And I see them out there every day. If they've missed a street, shame on us, we'll fix it tomorrow. But we're, right now, you can go through the majority of the town and see we're ahead of the game on leaves. And as far as like, you brought up in the last meeting, as far as storm water management and everything, we're probably, again, we're the poster child as far as getting off of state aid. We're the poster child as far as state storm water management. We sweep these streets more than any town in New Jersey. So I mean, that's never a concern. And you're right. When we do have rain, the leaves naturally go down to the drains. The drains are pitched, so the water goes down. And the leaves do clog the drains, and then they're cleaned off with the proper drains. They're not the ones that will go right into the lake, they're cleaned off, and then everything's back to order. But I've seen no problems with flooding or leaves. But if we have missed a couple, it'll be addressed tomorrow, and there'll be some of there before Thanksgiving. And that's, we have Tuesday, Wednesday to hit that zone.
Okay.
Yeah. And we, but it's impossible to say, no, we don't know who's going to call out sick. We don't know what machine is going to break down. So one machine is older than the myth. So I mean, you know, we're patching stuff together. We have the two backhoes and the front end loader out there picking them up and putting them in a roll-off container and taking them to, taking them right over here to Neptune.
I actually saw the truck having lunch, and I knew we had it. I see with the, I said, I haven't seen it on these streets, but like I said, I was at the library two weeks ago, they had whole block, and it's gone three days later.
I'm sure our administration will be on top of that first thing tomorrow, Tracy. And thank you for bringing it to our attention. Rita, time's up.
Rita Moreno, 504 8th Avenue. Well, I was supposed to get some answers tonight about my question about the city employee with the interfaith situation. That's one of the things. The other thing I wanted to say, Jesse, you went to the League of Municipalities, right? You should have found out more about how to reduce taxes than securing City Hall. I mean, we're all living in these times, and it'd be nice if we were protected, too. And the other thing I wanted to talk about was what the tax abatement coming up tonight. The guy wears his arm on his sleeve, his heart here. I mean, how long are we going to be giving tax abatements? People buy buildings, they know what they're doing, they know what the taxes are. He was very vague about everything. He didn't know the taxes, he didn't know what he was going to do with the building. And eventually, the building goes up, and it's something you don't like, or something we don't need, or something we don't want. So I mean, how long are you going to continue to listen to people with tax abatements? Why don't you make a statement saying it's over?
It's not. It was given a five-year life.
Right, that was my point, is that we're with it. So I think it, we'll go with it really.
All right. What's the five-year life? I never heard that one.
In 2000.
13, 14.
2013. Early when John and I came on, that came up, about the five-year tax abatement and continuing it. I don't remember what the vote was. In retrospect, I would, if I didn't vote no, I would have voted no.
It was 32.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
I don't remember. But if I didn't vote no, and Joe's saying I did, so maybe I did. But our tax assessor doesn't recommend it. Once this five years is up, and we're two into the five, I don't see it happening again. It's not spurring growth. Growth is coming to Asbury Park organically. People aren't coming to Asbury Park because we have five-year tax abatements. They don't know about them until after and then apply for them. And generally speaking. And generally speaking, they're building this building with the tax abatement, without the tax abatement anyway. It seems to be an afterthought.
Right. So, the only thing I would say is that it's, I was thinking about this exact thing today, what you were saying is, when we have it for the next two years, or whatever it is, it's a decent tool to try to help the development spread to other parts of the community, right?
But, yeah, but I think this was our question two years ago, and don't quote me, this was two years ago, but we specifically asked, can you section it off? Can you put the, can you allow five-year tax abatements in, say, Southwest, or somewhere where you want?
No, you know, I'm not talking about that. I'm just, I just mean that since we're stuck with it for a couple of years, it's a good thing to ask. Like, if somebody, if he's willing to say 25% workforce from the community, I would in a second say, okay.
That goes my tongue.
Because it's, we have, it's something that nobody's entitled to, especially the commercial ones, but you have the opportunity to give that to someone if they're willing to do something in the community. So, it's a tool that we can use to push things that are important to us. Now, if they choose not to do it, that's fine, they make the choice not to give it, in my opinion.
We don't need, if we have the five-year tax abatement, I would vote no, Rita. I'm with you on that.
I know, but we need one more vote, then, because we've got you and Joe. Right?
You can't vote on it until 2018.
So, you have a few years to gather that vote, Rita.
I had one more thing. When you say you're going to get $1 million from the Green Acres.
1.1.
Huh?
1.1.
And then we have to match a quarter of that?
Well.
Which is 250.
The idea has always been that we would find the match somewhere else, and to that end, we applied for a green. The county actually said on the record, the Freehold, we've all five of them, said they'd be willing to provide us with a match if we obtained Green Acres funds. So, we're just working out what's the best way to obtain that money from the county. We put in an application for municipal grant, which is 250. But there's been discussion with the county of other ways to provide that match. So, it's not coming out of the Asbury Park tax bracket. It's either county or state, or a conservation foundation to help us out.
And you said you're going to negotiate that with the I-STAR?
Right. And you had the.
You're going to do it, or our attorneys? I mean, like, you know, those guys are barracudas. I've seen them operate at a meeting. It's very hard to compete with them. And I don't know if anybody here is able to.
What do you think, Fred?
That's not Fred. I know it's Barry. I know it's Barry. Hi, Barry. They're not as nice as Barry, I know that. Do I have an answer for my I, the Interfaith?
It's a question that we responded to the question about Interfaith neighbors at the last two regular sessions and the last two work sessions. The question that was posed at the last meeting was about two properties on the east side and one on the low. The manager did report out on that prior, before the meeting, or the beginning of the meeting.
I missed it.
We'll have the discussion with you by after the meeting, if you want.
Okay.
Yeah, you were a little bit late, you missed it.
You know, it's time to end all these, Interfaith and all these people. They've made an industry on poor people. I guess you know that. And it's got to end somewhere. They're not privileged. I mean, I need a sidewalk, too. And by the way, I have something nice to say. Somebody filled the potholes on my street. That was a miracle in itself. Nobody even called.
There it is.
So, that was good.
Thank you, Rita.
She got it.
Go ahead, Gary.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Jerry Scramma, Long Branch. What I wanted to ask is, is the council going to instruct the new city manager that we like to have monthly reports on, and be able to look at them, the public to look at them? Because there may be somebody outside City Hall that may have an idea to help the city cut costs. Then the other thing is, you know, when they have these weddings on the beach, could you tell me what they get out of it, what we get out of it, the city? Because I know, like, in Long Branch, when they have the weddings on the beach, most of them have the reception at the Ocean Plaza. And I was wondering, do most of the people, when they have a wedding on the beach, do they use the facilities of Asbury Park, or is it just on the beach and then it's gone? And then, if there's a fee, maybe the fee gets waived if they show they're using our businesses for their wedding, whether it's the flower guy or whatever. And then, I asked you last time, last meeting, about being proactive about having the code enforcement or the fire department inspect the houses for fire alarms, like Long Branch does, they're the fee of $25, and they go to all non-owner units. So, if you have an apartment house with three units and you don't live in it, then the fire department gets three fees to go look at the apartment building and make sure the smoke detectors are working. So, I like to suggest that we do something like that. And then, the other thing is, like, you know, the man gave an elegant speech about how he's going to try to do his new building like his heart on his sleeve, but the bottom-line taxpayers, tax abatement are rarely taking money out of your friend, the taxpayer's pocket. And that's why, what you guys did was a good job trying to get a definite answer. And he kept saying, I can't guarantee. Well, you know what? Don't guarantee, don't bank on getting a tax abatement. That's all you need to say. Thank you very much. So, you have an answer about the monthly meetings and about the fee for checking smoke detectors? Make it an annual thing?
I'll say 90% of the wedding applications that come, at least that I look at, are using McLunes or Watermark or something.
Okay, that's good. That's fine.
Right, but they pay us a fee. Right, right now, there's 17 wedding applications, pay $250 each, so it took us 30 minutes, 30 seconds to take.
No, that's good. That's fine.
$250. Come January 1st, it's going up $100, and special investments told, take no more applications to January 1st, because we want the extra $100. Because, yeah, these restaurants are banged down, unfortunate because they're advertising. Have a wedding here, we'll give you the beach. We're charging $250, it goes up to $350 January 1st.
Who knows? We could be a wedding capital of the Jersey Shore.
Well, we have quite a few a year, we're taking a nice penny off of it. It costs the city nothing, they set everything up themselves. There's no city labor, there's no anything. They pay us just to use the beach.
That's good.
As far as the other questions, I'm going to let Michael and Kevin answer.
Yeah, Jerry, so, what I think you're asking is the fees for what we call the smoke detector and carbon monoxide.
Annual, though.
Right, compliance. Those are done on a rotating basis when the buildings are inspected, but when COs take place, the regular CO inspection, those inspections are done by the construction office or code enforcement, because they're there anyway. They're there anyway to do the CO inspection, so they do the smoke detector compliance and the CO compliance. We just started a program last year where we are now, aside from the multiple dwellings, which is three housing units or more, they changed the state code, and we're now able to inspect non-owner occupied one and two-family dwellings, which we've been chipping away at as we speak. It's a new program.
Okay, I just thought it was a good idea, because it seemed, Joe, there's a lot of fires in Asbury Park. I mean, I don't know how many there are in Ocean Township or Eden Town, but we seem to know about the ones in Asbury Park. And I go, so Long Branch was being proactive by having the fire department.
We've been doing that, I've been.
Every year?
I've been in the fire department 28 years, and we've been, it's been being done for 28 years. I can't tell you, ever since the Uniform Fire Safety Code took place, which was the result of some horrific fires that happened in the 80s, that's been in place. But in Asbury Park, as in most places, the construction department does it, or the, I keep saying that, the code enforcement department does that because they're there anyway for the CO inspection.
Yeah, but sometimes tenants could stay in an apartment for three years. In Long Branch, they check it every year, and I just think it's a good safety feature. It keeps everybody alone. They know.
We also do it when we do the regular fire inspections, and depending on what the occupancy is, is the frequency of the inspection. And now, that, last year, we started doing the non-owner occupied one and two-family